Mr. Smith.
Thank you all for coming to tonight's meeting. It's 5:00. Let the record show that Councilmember Adams and Mayor Pro Tim Cobb is not present. We'll now start off with the invocation by Mr. Don Smith and the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Segaro.
Lord, thank you for all you do for us. With your help, everything is possible. And, Lord, we need your help. Israel has major problems and needs your continual help. Our country has way too much crime. And here in the city, I think in some cases, we need a more caring attitude. Lord, with your help, these issues can be addressed and solved. In your name we pray, amen.
Pledge of allegiance could apply of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Smith and Councilmember Segaro. Let the record show that Mayor Pro Tim Cobb is present. Do we have Councilmember Adams on Zoom? Okay, he's not on Zoom, okay. Thank you, Francisco. Counsel, I would like a motion to approve the agenda except for PR-23-027. My system is not working. Anyone, please?
I make a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of PR-23-027 for rescheduling in January 2024.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have to go back to the original motion so Madam Secretary can get it correct. Councilmember Board?
You want me to repeat the motion?
Yes, please.
Sure, make a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of PR-23-027 for rescheduling in January 2024.
And I second that motion.
Thank you both. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero. Madam Secretary, presentation.
PR-23028, presentation, Bell County Child Safety Check.
Thank you. Commissioner Minor and Commissioner Whitson. Oh, okay, sir. Well, thank you for coming being here.
My check is bigger than the commissioner's.
Okay.
Mayor, Counsel, thank you for having me. My name is Shay Ludiki. I'm your tax assessor collector for Bell County. It's always a good time of year for me because state law says that I have to collect all these fees and taxes throughout the year. But there's a small section of the Transportation Code that says, hey, you can give some of those fees back, and this is a good cause for child safety. So last year, we collected $1.50, last fiscal year, '23, which ended September 30th. We collected $1.50 on registering 310,046 vehicles across the county. That number is continuing to rise, but 310,000 is quite a few. State law says that we have to distribute these funds that we collect, the $1.50 fee, to all the municipalities based on population. And we take that population off the census, most current one, which was in 2020. So my presentation's not that long. I'm going to read a short paragraph for you, and then I'm going to hand you all a check and then turn it over to the commissioners for the next check. As outlined in the Transportation Code, Chapter 502.403, the county tax assessor collector has the authority, with the approval from the Commissioners' Court, to levy an additional $1.50 per vehicle registration, excluding those exempted by code. And those that are exempted by code are your farm tags and your disabled vet plates. These funds are earmarked for existing crossing guard programs. In cases where school districts lack a crossing guard program, the money must be allocated to initiatives promoting child safety, health, or nutrition. This includes support for child abuse prevention intervention as well as drug and alcohol abuse prevention. Alternatively, the funds can be directed towards programs enhancing public safety and security, as per Article 102.014G of the Code of Criminal Procedure. The check for this year's allocation for Colleen is $172,866.15. A notification of this letter was also sent to the Colleen Independent School District. And that concludes my presentation. And our city manager is coming to take the check.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Appreciate you.
Next, presentation. Thank you, sir.
The commissioners will be presenting their check next.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good evening. Oh, good afternoon.
Good evening, Counsel, Madam Mayor. I'm here with Commissioner Whitson, and we're here to present the hotel motel tax that was collected for the last fiscal year in the amount of $96,540.75. We'll be presenting that to the city manager. As you know, the Bell County, and I believe the city, will be doing short-term rental collections as well here next year, probably. So I would anticipate this going up next year. So, thank you.
Thank you both. Citizen comments on agenda items. You have four minutes to speak, and Counsel, you have one minute allotted to respond if you choose to. Michael Fornino. Good afternoon, you have four minutes.
With regard to the Veterans Cemetery, I have every faith and confidence in the gentleman who's going to be presenting his pitch tonight for your discussion and approval. However, I would caution you, as a veteran, given the city's track record when they take over things such as the Fort Hood Animal Control and other such things, looking at the condition of the Colleen City Cemetery, I caution you all, a place of honor and respect, not that a civilian cemetery deserves any less, but given the history and track record here, if it falls by the wayside, it starts to get overgrown, neglected, and looking like just another cash grab or a way to grab resources of manpower to move around the city, that is going to be beyond offensive. And I just caution and warn you all, do not let that happen. Again, the gentleman who is pitching it to us, I have every faith and confidence. I've talked with him on several occasions, face to face, eye to eye, and I have zero issue with his presentation. I'm just reiterating the fact that the city does not have a good track record when it comes to the care and maintenance of certain facilities and programs. It just, if this happens, bear in mind that you reside and preside over one of the largest veteran communities in the world, combat or otherwise. So we'll be tied to anybody that lets that program or even allows it to look like it's lacking, where I'm quite sure that there's people in this room that have friends, relatives, and loved ones who lay an honor piece in that plot of ground that is granted to us. That's all I can say. I mean, I, just looking at it from the track record, do not let it fall by the wayside.
Thank you. Melissa Brown. Good afternoon, you have four minutes.
Just as a housekeeping note, I appreciate the Counsel allowing the presentation of the Hotel Motel Occupancy Tax, even though it wasn't on the agenda. As far as the Veterans Cemetery goes, I did have the opportunity last week to speak to the representatives from the Texas Land Board. And I will tell you that I'm very excited and encouraged after speaking with them. My first comment to them was very similar to the stuff that I have seen echoed publicly on different forums, which is the concern about the care and maintenance of the Veterans Cemetery, especially when you look at the Colleen Cemetery and how the upkeep of that is not done. They have assured me that there are checks and balances in place, and really, they're still calling all the shots for it. So these are employees that are going to be working for the land board, wearing a City of Colleen shirt. It does give these people an opportunity to be eligible for benefits. It gives them the opportunity to be eligible for retirement, gives them an opportunity for stability and to be able to plan for the future. I think that this is a great idea. I think we need to be very cautious with it, make sure that we don't ever end up abusing it. So oversight is going to be essential. And also, making sure that council members visit there frequently, just to make sure that it's up to the council's standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. David Bass. Good afternoon, sir, you have four minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. My name is David Bass, I live in Colleen. I would like to begin by congratulating our mayor, city council, city manager, and all the city staff for doing a great job this year. Our city is growing and thriving. My wife and I appreciate all your great work in 2023. We enjoy living here as retirees. I'm speaking tonight regarding our Central Texas State Veterans Cemetery. I was concerned when I heard about Colleen taking responsibility for the cemetery. I and my veteran friends have been attending events at the cemetery ever since it opened. We're very proud of our Veterans Cemetery. We attend the unaccompanied veteran burials, the annual wreath laying, Veterans Day, Memorial Day activities, and other community events at the cemetery. Sometimes, we just ride our motorcycles through the cemetery to pay respect to our comrades buried there and make sure everything is in order. I spoke about my concerns with the city council member, and I called Representative Brad Buckley's office to make sure they knew about this proposed action. Today, I read the interlocal agreement, the contract, and the budget. After reading these documents and getting feedback from the council member, I feel more confident about this plan. If I read the agreement correctly, it is a yearly contract. VLB is not just giving up the cemeteries. It will be a partnership between VLB and local municipalities. VLB will remain overall responsible for the cemetery, and Colleen will manage day-to-day operations. If in the future, VLB doesn't give the money to the city to operate the cemetery, then my understanding is the contract would be void. This is important because VLB gets a lot of its budget from the legislature. The current budget, if I understand correctly, is 1.3 million. The current cemetery employees, who are contract employees, not state employees, which I was surprised to know that, will become Colleen employees, which is a really good thing for them. VLB provides funds for their salaries and benefits. Please correct me if I'm wrong about any of this. Okay, that's good news because it means I can still read and comprehend government documents. Please remember going forward that all the families with loved ones interred at the cemetery, all the local veteran service organizations, the local veteran biker groups, and community organizations will be keeping a close eye on the cemetery to make sure that current standards are maintained. Thank you for your service to Colleen. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Bass. That was a great summary of our RS-23-210. Madam Secretary, consent agenda.
MN-23029.
Madam Secretary, I apologize. Do we have any more forms for citizen comments that may have been overlooked? All right, thank you.
MN-23029, consider minutes of regular city council meeting of November 28, 2023. RS-23202, consider a memorandum resolution approving the investment reports for the quarter ended September 30, 2023. RS-23203, consider a memorandum resolution awarding bid number 2407, non-exclusive rental car concessions for the rental car lease agreements at the Colleen Regional Airport. RS-23204, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the purchase of library books from Ingram Library Services through the Texas Smart Buy Cooperative Purchasing Program for fiscal year 2023-2024 in an amount not to exceed $90,000. RS-23205, consider a memorandum resolution accepting the Victim of Crime Act, VOCA, Crisis Assistance Program grant through the Office of the Governor, Criminal Justice Division. RS-23206, consider a memorandum resolution ratifying expenditures related to the emergency remediation of the sewer main break at lift station number 20 in the amount of $72,799. RS-23207, consider a memorandum resolution ratifying an emergency remediation service and testing for paint cleanup disposal and testing in Little Nolan Creek by CG Environmental in the amount of $155,306.29. RS-23208, consider a memorandum resolution declaring a vacancy on the Arts Commission and appointing a new member to fill the vacancy. RS-23209, consider a memorandum resolution granting an operating authority to Ambiance Limousine and Transportation LLC.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Can I get a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda? Councilmember Alvarez.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Councilmember Board?
Second.
Thank you. All, any discussion? All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero. Madam Secretary, resolutions.
RS-23210, consider a memorandum resolution to authorize an interlocal agreement with the General Land Office and Veterans Land Board for the City of Colleen to assume responsibility for cemetery management and operation services for the Texas State Veterans Cemetery in Colleen, Texas.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counsel, this presentation was presented last week, but Mr. Cagle, would you just give an overview of everything? Just make sure the Counsel don't want us to go back through the slides, but we go back through it. Okay, there was a lot of things said during the citizen comment. Can you really give an overview for individuals that may not have been following this before Tuesday night?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I think the main thing to remember, it's already been said today, but that the General Land Office, Veteran Lands Board, the state of Texas retains ownership and control of the cemetery. We're a contractor. They're hiring us to maintain the cemetery and run the operations out there. And they are fully compensating us for all our direct and indirect costs, and we're agreeing to a set of very strict national standards to maintain the cemetery and the cemetery operations. And if either party fails to live up to their obligations, there's ways to end the contract and walk away. Neither side walks away immediately. We work it out how the operations would be transferred smoothly if there is one or another party that doesn't hold, excuse me, doesn't hold up their end of the obligation. So it is an annual contract, and as you'll see, what we have in front of you is eight months, and it was correct, the budget for that eight months is, it's about 1.2, 1.3 million. And we'll submit a budget every year, and we'll have negotiations with the state about that, but on an annual basis, it's somewhere between 1.8, 1.9 million dollars. And the state is responsible for all capital expenditures over $1,000. So if there's some major maintenance unexpected that occurs, the state pays for that if it's over $1,000. I think we've worked out a very good contract, and I think we both understand each other. And I think it was also said that the contract employees out there, I believe, are excited about becoming a part of the City of Colleen and having benefits now as opposed to just a paycheck without any benefits. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have, and Dr. Kelly is here as well.
Thank you, Mr. Cagle. Councilmember Board, do you have a question, sir?
No, ma'am, I have some remarks.
Okay. Do anyone have a question? Councilmember Segaro?
Yes, Mayor.
I'll come back to you, Councilmember Board.
Thank you, and I appreciate everybody that spoke, because a lot of the questions that we all had, I know that the citizens had, and I think that this is something big, but it's something that's near and dear to everybody's heart, and I know we all have a passion. But I think that overall, and our city manager just kind of explained, I think overall, the biggest benefit is for the people that do all the hard work out there. And I know as I talk to some people, they didn't even realize that the employees out there get no benefits. They don't get no healthcare, retirement, and stuff. So I think having benefit, it turns you from a contractor to, from a job to more of a career. You know, you're going to be there because of longevity. So my question is to the city manager, if, once we bring them on board and they do got those benefits, and let's just say in the future, we decide, okay, we're not going to renew that contract, what happens to that? Because they got benefits and they like that, and now they get taken care, taken away, or what?
Yes, sir. Well, either the state of Texas would hire another operator, take it over themselves in any case. They can offer those jobs that are out there now, which I'm sure that would be their preference. They can offer those jobs if they choose to, if they choose not to. There are employees. We can also offer them any jobs that fit their capabilities in the city. You see the report that we have, we always have a number of openings, about 1,300 positions, and, you know, we almost always have at least 5% to 10% vacancy. So there would be some possibilities of jobs there if they're not offered employment with the state or the new contractor.
And also, we're able to provide any type of backup if they get overrun or something. I know that that's happened a couple of times. We have our Veterans Day, or is it the, I'm not sure which one they had, open up the side, and you got all this parking and overflow, things like that. So I think it's a great, and I think that the cemetery has always, to me, from my perspective, it's always been a community thing. It's not just a person. So I know that there's so many great organizations that go out there and volunteer, so I think it's going to continue to be that way. It's not just the cities, the employees work for the city, but it's going to continue on being a whole community, and all those organizations that are out there keeping an eye on us, you know, good for us, you know, good for you that you're watching it. But I think that with your help, it's going to continue to do great things. So, thank you.
Councilmember, thank you, Councilmember Segaro. Councilmember Alvarez, do you have a question or remark?
I have two questions, Mayor. I guess first question was, and we didn't really get into this option during the presentation last week, but what happens, maybe one of the VLB representatives can better answer this, what happens if the city declines the state's request like the county did?
Dr. Kelly, you want to take a shot at that question?
Good. Mayor, councilmembers. Dr. John Kelly, I'm the director of the Texas State Veterans Cemetery Program. I'm not sure I understand your question. Could you rephrase that perhaps?
You're requesting for the city to take over staffing and operations of the state Veterans Cemetery. I said, what happens if the city says no and does not accept your request? What does the state's Plan C?
Great question, and thank you for that. I do want to give a little bit of longer explanation so you can kind of understand how we got to where we are and the why behind this. All of the cemeteries, as they started operations, this one in 2006, our cemetery in Mission also in 2006, cemetery in Abilene in 2009, and our cemetery in Corpus Christi in 2011, were operated by a vendor who specialized in cemetery operations. And that relationship went very, very well, but it began to sour in the year 2018. And in 2019, in the middle of a fiscal year, in February 2019, we terminated that contract with that vendor. Now, as you might expect, we were presented with the immediate problem of how do we continue to bury our veterans and honor our families out there? And the answer was that we turned to the state's temp agency. We have a contract with a standing temp agency, and that's the folks that we brought on to the cemetery to do that work. Someone, I don't know exactly who to attribute it to, but somebody had a good idea, in 2020, why don't we see if local governments could perform that function for us? And so we started down at our cemetery in Mission, Texas. In August of 2020, we signed a contract with the City of Mission to do exactly what we're proposing with Colleen. So that one's been operating for three years now. I was just down there yesterday, actually, presenting some awards. Our cemeteries, all four of our cemeteries have won an astounding 99.03% customer satisfaction rate. And so I want to recognize those great staff that do that for us out there. So we started with Mission. A year later, we brought on board Nuaces County, who provide that service at our cemetery in Corpus Christi. And earlier this year, on the 1st of October, our contract started with the City of Abilene to do the exact same thing at the Texas State Veterans Cemetery in Abilene. So we have four cemeteries, three of them are already doing this and have been doing it for quite a while. To more directly answer your question, if you all said no to this, we would continue as we are now with temp agency employees manning that cemetery. And I hope you don't disagree with me, they do a fantastic job. As I said, we're award-winning with customer satisfaction score, and that cemetery actually just won an Operational Excellence Award from the National Cemetery Administration for their inspection about a month ago. None of those things will change in terms of our inspection processes, our policies, our procedures will all remain in effect. What we're asking you to do is to provide the workforce and the daily operating supplies. Now, it gets more descriptive inside of the contract, but ultimately, that's what we're asking you to do. And in doing so, you absorb those great employees out there who, right now, are still temp agency employees with virtually no benefits, no retirement, no 401K, no health, no dental, none of those kinds of benefits. We want to take care of our troops, so to speak. For those of us who served in uniform, we understand the concept, and if you're a family member of someone in uniform, you understand the concept of taking care of troops. We want to take care of our employees in the same way. And so that's the idea behind what we're doing. We've been doing it for quite a while now, all across the state. Our new cemetery we're building right now, we already have agreement from the City of Lubbock that they're going to do that for us once that cemetery is open and functional as well. But if you were to say no, we would continue to do business as we're doing right now.
Okay, thank you so much. And my second question, I don't know if this is better for you or for the city manager. I don't see where this is a budgeted item on the state's budget, and we are all too familiar with unfunded state mandates. Obviously, we have a strong contract, and there's money currently in place for this, but you can't go without some concern as to what happens if... Obviously, Mr. Cagle kind of touched on that. I wanted to know if you had something else maybe to add to that.
Yes, and thank you for the question. It's a great one, and it was alluded to in previous comments. We do not get state money to run the cemeteries. The VLB is composed of three pillars, the cemetery program, the veterans' homes program, and the veterans' loans programs. We, the VLB, actually loan money for people to buy a home, to improve their home, or to buy land. When we give those veterans the loan, they actually repay it with a small interest rate attached to it, and it's lower than market rates. That interest that they repay is what funds our cemetery program and part of our veterans' home program. So we don't get state money for that. Therefore, we're not subject to reductions, et cetera, or limitations from the legislature, because we generate those funds internally. And we also sell bonds, and we generate funds from that as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protown.
I have a question, and I do have a remark. My question is, the persons who are doing your temporary agencies that's taking care, you have explained to them that we now have job openings, and they're going to apply. Is that what I'm understanding you to say?
Well, I haven't informed them yet.
Okay.
We were trying to see where this is going to go before, you know, telling them that they actually have that opportunity. My plan right now is to address them on the 28th of December. And I'm going to tell them they've got a decision to make. Their decision is, do they want to go with the city? Do they want to stay with their current temp agency contractor? Or do they want to do neither of those and go and do something else? And I'm going to give them a week to research that, to look at the city's website, look at the benefits programs, et cetera. And I'm sorry, Mr. Cagle, to throw this on you, I'm going to ask that HR comes out on the 4th of January and answers any questions that they generated in that one week period, and briefs them on the benefits packages and onboarding that he's described before. I think we do that on the 4th of January. That gives us a month until a contract kicks in on the 5th of February to get them on-boarded. For those that choose to do something else, that's their time to go and do those other things.
In my remark, I believe in our city staff, and I believe in those persons who are going to be hired. And as long as that's a cemetery, a veteran cemetery, we honor those who have given their life and have taken time to work and sacrifice their families. We would not let that cemetery go rogue.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for that. I would just add that ultimately, I am responsible for everything that happens at that cemetery and our other state veteran cemeteries. I will maintain the standards that we have now. We're winning awards for what we do out there, and I aim to keep that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Protown. Councilmember Board.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And just a reminder that this is a highly regarded, award-winning, 174-acre veteran cemetery. Following the council workshop last week, I determined to schedule a meeting and a tour of the grounds of the facilities to become more familiar with what may become the city's responsibility in terms of daily operations. On yesterday, I spent nearly two and a half hours, or just about all of two and a half hours, meeting with the senior leadership and the team who are with the operations at the cemetery. During my visit, I asked a lot of questions, and I did a lot of listening, because it was important for me to understand the current operations as well as the culture in place amongst the staff. And thank you, by the way, Mr. Gault, for your transparency in the conversations we had yesterday. And so I just want to note five aspects to my fellow council members to consider relating to my visit. The staff, let me first say, the existing staff are dedicated, knowledgeable professionals, period. The majority of them are veterans who have and instill passion for this work, and are also in place for the long term, and often accept the opportunity to grow into larger roles within the organization. That's one thing I learned yesterday. The operations, the current operations and structure is nothing less than refined at this point. I was able to view the operational dashboard, which tracks relevant data, such as burial options, availability, and the daily activity. I learned about standard practices, the annual VA customer satisfaction survey, triennial VA inspections, general land office audits, self-assessments, and the annual performance reviews. Level of service, there is a commitment to service and reverence, which appears to be paramount to all the existing staff. This I noticed in the overall upkeep of the grounds, as well as my recognition of safety and accessibility, and the sincerity in interacting with staff. Growth, there are some major projects that were recently completed, and there are future phases of expansion to include a second entrance at the intersection of State Highway 195 and Spahn Ranch, which is right across from the cell station. So we can expect the standards to remain consistent. Mr. Gault, the cemetery divisions manager, is very experienced, having overseen and implemented a lot of the refinements to this operation over time. I didn't realize he was a retired Garrison Sergeant Major, as well as a Core Sergeant Major, so very confident things will stay in line. In summary, I trust the City of Colleen will be a perfect fit for the Central Texas State Veteran Cemetery in providing much-needed benefits to a well-deserving staff. They already meet the motto of dedicated service, every day for everyone, and I look forward to seeing them transition into the city's great workforce. Notably, my charge as city manager would be to sustain the current operational structure, provide council with routine briefs on the cemetery operations, and ensure their veteran cemetery patch complements their new City of Colleen uniform. With all that said, I make a motion.
Sir, before you make a motion, we have other people that would like to speak, that have not.
Understood, and that would be in discussion after the motion is made. Is that correct?
She may want to ask questions, but go ahead on, do it your way.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So with that said, I make a motion to approve RS-23-210.
I second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and clarity that you provided to our citizens and to the council as a whole over the last couple of days as we've gone through this. Just a quick question, though, Mr. Cagle, are we fully, are they fully staffed at the cemetery currently? And so in the event that we had to do any type of recruiting, so let's just say we had an employee that was hired there that is now a City of Colleen employee that transitioned somewhere else, we're responsible at that point for recruiting and retention?
Yes, ma'am, just like any other, any other city position.
Perfect. Okay. And to the comment that was made by one of our citizens, you know, I did take pause when I heard this at first, and so I just want to echo the words that I've heard, and I've heard that the employees are just absolutely fabulous, they're all veterans. It means a lot. Both my parents are out there, and I'm from here. I take it very seriously, and it is truly a great honor and a privilege now for us to be taking care of our own, literally, the folks that are working and the folks that are interned out there. So thank you for your service, and that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gonzalez. Any more discussion on items? All in favor, yes. Public hearing.
PH 23062, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Carolyn Brown on behalf of 501-503 Powell LLC, case number Z23-26, to rezone lots 2 and 4 and part of lots 1 and 3, block 36, out of Colleen Original Town from B5 Business District to BC1 General Business and Alcohol District. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the City of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of approximately 1.09 acres, being lots 2 and 4 and part of lots 1 and 3, block 36, out of Colleen Original Town from B5 Business District to BC1 General Business and Alcohol District, providing a savings clause providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Council Mr. Rebell presented last week. Would you like for him to present again to the council?
No.
Melissa Brown, you have four minutes. You have four minutes.
Good evening, Council. Quite often, the citizens are chastised for not coming up and talking about things that we support, and only coming up to speak about things that we dislike or don't support. So I want to change that. Tonight, I want to come up and let you know that I highly support this zoning request. In Harker Heights, not only has the East Center been busy with a vast variety of events that draw in hundreds of people, not just from Harker Heights in Colleen, but from all over, they also have always been community outreach events. There's an annual Thanksgiving dinner that is for each public to come in for anyone who's in need. They do a lot of other community cultural, holiday events that are free for everyone to attend. I think this is a good way to bring people into our city, to bring them to our downtown area, and to allow for that expansion and growth of having a reason for people to come in, because there is so much variety, and there are so many people that are interested in the different events that happen there. I really don't have anything else to say. I don't want to take a whole lot of time tonight, except for I would encourage and request that you please support this request for BC1.
Thank you. Ronnie Russell. Good evening, sir. You have four minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Of course, I definitely agree with changing this B5 to BC1. Just like Ms. Brown has said, there's a lot of new energy that's about to come to the downtown area. We've had several meetings about her interest. I think it's really her heart. That makes it different. Because when you understand the nature of what's coming into the city, I think this is a new compliment, not just to the city, but not just to the downtown area. But I think it's a new compliment to the Bell County Annex that's coming down here. So every new citizen, whether they're just getting here, this is a transient environment, so after every tenth of each month, there's new soldiers that are here. So all the new soldiers that are coming in, coming to the new events, that's going to be here in the downtown area, now they get to know where is the new annex that's going to be here downtown. So I think it is a parallel advertisement for what is down here, for the restaurants that are currently here, for the new restaurants that are coming, for the community that's down here. Of course, as you already know, it's already a compliment to the comp plan. So not just the inside, but also development of the outside. The parking lot has been the same parking lot since 2019. So the new development that is coming up is also going to bring about a new greener-looking parking lot to the downtown area. So I think changing this to BC1 is going to be a huge compliment. So I pray that you make the best decision, not just for the constituents that's in District 1, but for all constituents that's in the City of Colleen that will be coming down here. So it's a complete benefit for all districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protown.
If there's no more comments, I would like to make a motion.
Are there any more discussion on this before Mayor Protown make a motion?
Mrs. Brown is an upstanding citizen of this city and of this town, and the businesses that she have had been successful, and I've always seen them to be positive. Madam Mayor, I would like to move that we accept PH 23026.
Close public hearing. Would you repeat that, and you're making a motion?
I am making a motion that we move to approve PH 23062.
Thank you. Mayor Protown. Councilmember Board.
Second.
Please do not be yelling, the one that council means. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero. You have three minutes. Ebony Jackson. Good evening. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Colleen City Council and Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
And I'm happy to be here. Thank you so much. Long awaited. I would like to give an update on the Colleen Housing Authority. So I'm grateful for the opportunity to provide this update regarding the Colleen Housing Authority. I would like to share some of the letter that I received from David Poller, the Director of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in San Antonio, dated December 15. He stated he would like to express his gratitude for the Colleen Housing Authority's leadership in obtaining the KHA Board approval to transfer the KHA Housing Choice Voucher Program to the Central Texas Council of Government. Recognizing the challenging situation inherited by the board members, Mr. Poller commended us for taking action to protect KHA assisted families. He did say, "Your transparency and cooperation throughout this difficult process are greatly He would also, he also wanted to extend his appreciation to Ms. Sinda Hayward, who is our operational consultant. And she did such a wonderful job assisting us and guiding us with the board. Neither of us had a housing HUD background. He did state that the transfer could possibly be finalized January 1st of 2024. The transfer vouchers will mark the end of KHA's administration of HUD programs. However, it does not affect the KHA facility's corporation's role as the general partner of the former public housing properties that were converted under the Rental Assistant Demonstration Project-based Vouchers. It has become evident that KHA utilized HUD funds for ineligible expenses, although the exact amount of improperly used funds remains unclear. September 8th, HUD provided a quality assurance division, revealed a general lack of financial records to support KHA's use of HUD funding. KHA had also not completed tenant re-examinations or properly reported to HUD systems for some time. Once CitCog has reconstructed the Housing Assistance Payment Register, HUD will be able to determine the amount of funds that were spent on ineligible activities. Final closeout of the KHA voucher program will require an audit to validate the amount of funds owed by KHA to HUD programs.
Thank you. You have three minutes, so. Your three minutes is up.
May I request a minute extension?
Yes.
I would like to say-
I said, yes.
Thank you very much.
I don't have a vote, but I was saying.
Thank you very much. I would like to say I'm thankful for this validation as it allows K H A to maintain faith and momentum in making necessary decisions and actions, moving forward with our future task at hand. A humble thanks to HUD, to the HUD team who had our back the entire way. I would also like to give my gratitude to the Sid Cog. What they did is monumental. We are thankful that they took over the two hundred and thirty-two vouchers. I would like to thank the K H A board for their unwavering work and ethical service demonstrated throughout this ordeal. And lastly, I want to extend my thanks to my Bell County peers for their enormous support, allowing me to collaborate and advocate for our West Bell County citizens in effort to address the issue of homelessness, which directly impacts adverse health outcomes. I'm looking forward to working with our newly sworn-in K H A board members. Thank you.
I will give a comment, but I can't. But this is what I'm doing. Melissa Brown. You have three minutes.
I was going to come up and talk about the Moser Center again, and how Jim Reed had said that the council could potentially intervene in helping that open. However, based on this update that we received, I'd like to thank the mayor for acting so quickly to replace board members. And I'm going to leave that to the side in hopes that the board will be able to make progress on their own and have that become available again to the public. It is becoming an area where we have to worry about because of crime and criminals being over there, places that are vacant, being, and being blighted, squatters, potential for not only criminal activity, but fires, anything else, you name it. Instead, I'd like to go back to talking about the transparency and the information. Again, I noticed that it still says on the sign-up form and on the agenda that only residents of the city of Killeen are able to talk during this second citizen comment portion of the meeting. However, that was not the vote that was made by the council. That was not the motion. Staff isn't supposed to interpret the intention of motions. It is what the motion and the vote are. The mayor, the city manager, don't get to make that interpretation either. I would encourage and request that the council allow all members of the public to speak as per the Open Meetings Act. I'd also like to talk about the hostility. You know, I've watched the past couple weeks, and citizens have been a lot calmer. Hasn't been a whole lot going on, but yet we're still receiving a lot of attention coming out off of the dais towards us. Removals for almost no reason at all. People not paying attention when citizens are talking, clearly reading, because they're reading it out loud to themselves as they go along. I know, I see the clock is still running. I think it's important for everyone to know this, how long it's taking for the chair of this board, or this council, to not care, to not pay attention, to not listen. We're, we're trying. There's been a shift from the audience, if you haven't been able to tell. We would like to see that reciprocated, and we would like to still see stuff in writing per the council that doesn't change from one week to the next, to the next, to the next.
Your time is up. Thank you.
May I finish my statement, council members?
You have one minute.
If the citizens are asked to adhere to a code of conduct and a set of decorum, then the citizens respectfully request that the council adhere to the decorum and the code of conduct set out by yourselves for yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Jackson, I want to say thank you for the report. We have our protocol. We're not supposed to give feedback, but I can say that thank you for your report. It was great. So I didn't break protocol. All right. Sean Price. Good evening, sir. You have three minutes.
Good evening, mayor.
Good evening, sir.
City council. I come up here tonight a little dismayed about my city. This is not an easy topic that I bring to you. It's about supremacy. We have a disguised church called the Black Hebrew Israelite Church here in downtown Killeen, right off of Eighth and Sprott. They haven't done any violence here, but they have done violence in other states such as Florida, Georgia, Mississippi, Louisiana. And we have it here in our city now. And they're recent. We also have a group called the, I can't use their name, but it's the Not Effing Around Coalition. They're talking about more and more protest because they're on the side of Hamas. I don't know if we support a terrorist organization, but I would suggest that we don't. And it's not in our interest to support Hamas or have entities at C T C or, you know, in Austin at Texas University, or Texas A and M here, doing protests against Israel. I ask that you look into this organization that describes itself as a black supremacy group and advocates for the abolition or eradication of the white race. I don't see myself as a blue-eyed devil. Outside of that, I don't appreciate that the mayor would single out folks when disruptions were made right here tonight. Nothing done, nothing said to that person, no warning given to them, just a general statement. But last week, specific individual called out and removed. I get no disrupt, no dis, intended disruptions. I can understand that. But I think that we're tending to a communist state and ideology, and the disrespect by the mayor to sit there and disregard me up here while I speak speaks volumes. She does it to many people of my persuasion, and it's starting to piss me off. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Michael Fornino. Good evening, sir. You have three minutes.
I was one of just a few of the people who bothered to watch the propaganda piece put out by the mayor with Killeen Daily Herald on YouTube. And once again, do I need to get your attention like that job you had before politics, Madam Mayor? Yeah, that secret's coming out soon. Say, oh, how wonderful you are. Done great jobs. Okay? If you're doing such a great job, it's funny, nobody can ever seem to quantify what those great jobs are. Oh, you're doing great. You're doing fine. What's the job? I don't see anything. Keep praising downtown, it's been revitalized. Saturday afternoon last weekend, I could have used the, I could have used the parking places as a second lane of traffic. You spend a lot of money on travel, go here, there, and everywhere. Why aren't we the host city? You show them the Armored Warfare Museum, show them the Arts Center, go for steaks and beer at the Shiloh Inn. Why don't, why, why aren't people coming here? Why do you folks have to travel here, there, and everywhere? It's a one-way argument with you all the time. You asking for respect? I mean, what are you doing up there, writing your memoirs? Hello? I mean, this strange relationship that you have with the Killeen Daily Herald. Okay? You talk about transparency, lead by example. What is this example in front of me? I wouldn't let you lead two dogs mating. And that's the polite way of putting it. I mean, when it comes to your accomplishments, okay, on transparency, I have a request in for public records on all the emails between you and the Killeen Daily Herald, Madam Mayor. It's funny, I still get received, yours in service. That's the most to a, to a five-page email. That's the best you could muster? Yet, since one October, 2018, one thousand eight hundred and two emails back and forth between yourself and the Killeen Daily Herald. What transparency? How about you waive the $750 fee you want me to see? Because you're concerned, the city is concerned, that some confidential information might be in there. They've got to comb through it. What information would you be sharing with the press that not supposed to be shared, that they have a concern for? Drop the fee, let's see what you got. Can't even make eye contact with me. And I'm supposed to believe that you're a leader? Lead by example? Lead from the front? I can, I can quantify your failures. Nobody can quantify your successes, time and time again. You treat everything as a campaign stop, a lightly veiled campaign spot from the Herald, a one-way conversation on a podcast or a radio station? You're not a leader. You're a scared little girl that lost control of her little tea party. We're not stuffed animals.
Point of order. I actually have a question for the mayor.
Yes, sir.
I have a question for, for the attorney. I just, I just want clarity as a city councilman sitting on this dais from legal. When we are doing citizen comments in this format, are we permitting our citizens to make allegations and attacks directly to the council?
Question. Is it supposed to be a personal attack on an individual person, or should they be talking about a specific?
Yes, ma'am. You said it perfectly.
I think that's addressing decorum issue. Personal attacks are something I don't think that should be happening generally. I don't think that's something that's up for discussion as far as how they personally feel about a person's personality or things. But if there's something that, that's city business that someone has done that they're addressing, ultimately, that would be up, something that the council could vote on and decide what rules that could be followed in the future as well.
And I wanted to ask you, the attorney, that question because, you know, I'm all for freedom of speech. I just believe that it's important it remains productive. And so thank you for answering my question.
Of course.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Board, and I know I'm not supposed to say anything, but my late husband's name was Elijah, and we just talked about honoring our veterans that's in the cemetery, and everyone know he passed away. And, Councilmember Board, to your question, when you know it's not true, that's why I don't even care. Ms. Mayor Proton.
Okay. Good evening, mayor, council. I, our citizen comments have closed, so I get to-
It's not. It's not. I have to go through everyone.
Okay.
And I will keep your name. I'll come back to you, Councilmember. Councilmember Alvarez. Ms. Shirley. And y'all all can speak up, and I'll close that out. I'm good evening, you have three minutes.
Shirley Del Conte. And I, in advance, am going to be asking for that extra minute that you all voted to remove. I'm speaking on city council meeting, November twenty-eighth of this year, at approximately ninety minutes in, and I quote, "We were voted in by the majority of the people, not just six or seven people," end quote. Approximately two thousand people have been voting, and that is not a Killeen majority of people. There was once a council member that served and spoke often of transparency in our city government, and also exercised that same transparency. This council member held monthly meetings that was open to all, and also contacted people for their opinions as to give guidance when it came time for this council member to vote. No one today does this. Approximately ninety-one minutes in, and I quote, "We have a citizen's petition, and then other people get to speak on that, and like last week, we had three or four people speak," end quote. You are right when you said you were not listening to that item and not voting on it. Taking away a citizen's right to speak is exactly what you are doing. You do not have the right to limit citizens' comment in any way. Same meeting, approximately ninety-four minutes in, quote, "We are here to legislate. We should be working on ordinances. We should be working on things that are truly going to move our city forward and producing good benefits and good outcomes for our citizens," end quote. I didn't hear anything about what citizens want. Yes, and the citizen's petition was removed, and now we have off-the-agenda citizens' comments at the very end of all meetings. Recently added has been the restriction of residents only, and the only reason that was added was to squash people continually asking for meetings to discuss misinformation that has been put out-
Your three minutes is up.
I need that extra minute, please.
Counsel, you have a extra minute.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Asking for meetings to discuss misinformation that has been put out there by the city. No, this is not a sideshow or circus, but frustrations coming out when city officials are not listening to citizens of Killeen. I say again, you were put in those seats to be an extension of the residents of Killeen, and you are supposed to be representing all of the residents. But it appears you have your own agendas and doing what you want to do. I believe you know what the citizens are telling you, and you just don't care. So in approximately sixty-six thousand registered voters need to get off their behinds-
Your time is up.
-in every voting cycle.
Mr. Bill Prokett. Thank you. You have three minutes. It's your three minutes.
I just want to make sure I got a name correct.
Madam Secretary, the time is gone.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, Mr. Cagle. I just wanted to let everyone know how much I enjoyed this year's Christmas parade. It's the best one I've seen in a long time. I thank Mr. Cagle for changing the time to later when it's dark, because I knew all these entries were going to be lit up, and they were incredible. I mean, when it's 4:30 and you look at it, yeah, you can see some lights. When it's 6 o'clock, people did an awesome job of decorating everything, including our own Public Works Department that had four vehicles there. And I really enjoyed seeing that. Really, that's my favorite bunch, because those are the boots-on-the-ground guys that are fixing things, maintaining things. And I saw Mr. Jeff Reynolds and Michelle Lawler, and I was happy to see them. Saw some of the council members too here, the Fast and the Furious bunch there that were riding in Corvettes. But anyway, I really, I wanted to take this opportunity to thank three people that helped make sure that I got to see it this year. As you can see, I have a bit of a problem getting around right now. So, I had contacted Chief Gabinski, because every year I park my butt there at the fire station on Avenue D where the parade starts. And this year, I knew I wasn't going to be able to get there without some help. So, I asked him, you know, if I could somehow get closer to that, so I don't have much of a walk. And he was out of town, but he said, let me make a call. He called Mr. Joe Stewart, who's part of the emergency management team. He oversaw this year's parade. He called me back later. We, we had talked a little bit. He said, when you get ready to head this way, give me a call. And so, right before I was heading to downtown to watch the parade, he said, just come to Second Street, drive right up there to the barricade, ask for Officer Rosado. You will move the barricade, let you in. I was able to drive around and park right next to the fire station. And I greatly appreciate that, because they didn't have to do that. I'm just an average guy, but I wanted to see the parade this year. And like I said, I wanted to thank these people for making that possible for me. Thank you.
Thank you for the kind words, Mr. Burkett. Mr. Donald Smith. Good evening, sir. You have three minutes.
Madam Sec, uh, Madam Mayor, excuse me. Councilmembers, city manager, and city staff, it's always amazed me how we can put a man on the moon, but we can't deal with the homeless situation. And that's what I want to talk about. A recent article in the newspaper stated that the homeless had taken over an abandoned lot, and they couldn't find the owner. This is ridiculous. Everybody has to pay land taxes. All you have to do is go to the, the proper books, and you can see that. If someone isn't paying land taxes, their land can be confiscated and sold for the taxes. So, the first thing I would look at is doing that. You rent or sell the land to somebody else with the understanding they cleaned the place up. The picture in the paper, this land looked like the city dump. We should not tolerate this. Another area that I'm not sure about, but if, depending on the zoning of that particular area, let's say it's for houses, if I put a trailer on there, you're going to throw me off. So, why can't that cover the homeless situation also? The downtown area is very strict on grass, windows, blinds being open, and cleaning the area. I didn't know what I didn't know until Katie and Officer De La Cruz gave me a class on it, because I'm involved with a building down there. And violations there can cause a person to go to court. What I would recommend you start doing is, once a week, that area, get a welfare, health and welfare inspection with the Colleen Police Department and the Sanitation Department. If things are laying around messy, if the standards of the health are not correct, you collect all that stuff up, take it to the city dump, and they have to come get it. If you do that a couple of weeks, I think the problem will go away. I don't want to be un-Christian, but we, we, in my opinion, we cannot tolerate this kind of mess. And the people that have worked hard, that live around that area, what is going to happen to their housing prices? If somebody moved in next to me there on East Ramir and was straightening their land like that, they would have a big problem. But I think to taking care of our citizens, we need to address this area. And the last thing I want to say is, I've lived all over the world and all over the country. You people do a great job. You volunteer your time to sit up here and put up with a lot of stuff.
Mr. Smith, do you want another minute? Because your time is up.
Okay, just, I need about two seconds.
All right. Counsel?
If you all agree with it.
Counsel?
That's I'm saying something nice, but-
Okay. You have one minute.
It's real easy to criticize, especially if you've never been in a leadership position. In high school, I was a guard, weighed 150 pounds. Graduated from high school, oh, I know two or three colleges are going to write me a letter. Got zero letters. I said, well, I'll go to West Point. Got that turned down, but I, but I drove on anyway. But you guys do great, and Merry Christmas to all of you. And this is the best place I've lived, and I've lived all over the world and all over the country. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. The citizen comments are closed. I would just like to thank everyone, counsel. We did a great year and everything we have accomplished. Thank everyone for coming out. And Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all, Councilmember Board.
Mayor Proton said that you'll make sure I'll be able to speak-
I mean, Councilmember Alvarez.
Damn, I told you that.
Councilmember Alvarez.
You have to live in the city.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
That's not what the council-
Councilwoman Gonzalez. In the drawing.